I'm Miss Dixon.
Well, I'd like to.
May I just speak to that then if, um, this, um, okay. This committee that we have now is Advisory Committee, he serves in sixty-four. Does the bylaw say that we use these same people as, um, members or would they also be subject to change for sixty-four, sixty-five?
I don't remember seeing anything that, um...
Someone who's well from nursing service, it may not be these people.
Yeah, but that was what I was saying.
But the person at the hos- the hospital appoints their own representative. Ms. Hammitt will send who she wants to in this grave of sending who she wants. Sister will send who she wants if she can attend the meeting.
But since we're looking for business in January, just need to keep all registry together would be, um, make sense to me.
What was your motion again, Liz?
That I move that the Advisory Committee to the Registry, um, be ref- uh, deferred until the January Executive Board, when action on the Registry Committee takes place.
They had set up a date following that so they could go ahead and, and help that Registry Committee on the, on following the meeting. They do not wish to meet again until after you, you've had your appointment of the committees. Does that answer your question?
That's a mess.
No, because I think they are subject to, um, to change the way on the other...
Were they elected for two years or something?
Uh, since they were activated.
We're sure of their office.
When, were they elected last year?
No, no, they just started a month ago. They have just gotten appointed within the past two months.
It's a motion.
That's where it started. We have to speak to that. Since we're starting with a clean slate, why don't we just, if we want to change these members, how come we don't have the priority to speak up?
Uh-huh. Who said we should compose the, uh, the, uh, the Advisory Committee?
Her motion had been seconded, though. We're out of order.
Well, the Executive Board named those within the past few months. They have just accepted their appointments, uh...
It's gone, actually.
The Board, the Bo- the Board did this for the benefit of the new members that came on. It, it's been, uh, within the past few months and they have just accepted it. You see, they didn't know they were going to have all the technicalities involved on bylaws. And actually technically it was correct to go ahead and have your vote on bylaws in November. But in order to give every consideration to those who felt they needed more time and for their section to have more time, even when the lawyer said technically it was all right to do it, it was clearly, you know, defined by your state parliamentarian, Ms. Watts, that it was all right to do it. He thought it would be safer to wait. So consequently, everything was thrown off schedule. All of this had been planned for November.
And their appointment is four sixty-five, not sixty-four.
No, this appointment's just been made and they have just accepted their appointment.
Four sixty-five, not sixty-four. Well, these appointments supposed to fix it down.
You wrote minutes, Ms. Give me your minutes. Yeah, I need to keep a book, so, so I had calls about it and, uh, it's been a thing, yeah, I need to write that. Yeah, it's great, I've been looking at it, man.
I remember this from some other meeting, November meeting, yeah.
We're going to refer to the minutes. We have your motion before the House, Mr. May, who is clear.
Was that motion seconded?
Yes.
It has not been seconded.
Uh, Ms. Clark seconded it. All right, here you are on, um, May the fifth. The Study Committee, the Registry, Ms. Mace, oh, I'm, I'm not to be reading this. Secretary reading.
Reports of Standing Committees, Program.
No, read down there on this Study Committee.
Study Committee of the Registry, Ms. Mace read the written report and placed on file, recommendations. First, that the Nursing Advisory Committee to the Registry be reactivated immediately and that they be requested to formulate recommendations to be presented to the Executive Board on July the seventh for consideration in order that definite plans may be established for the appointment of the Registry Committee following the annual business meeting of September the tenth. Second, that the committee be composed of a doctor representing the medical profession, a private duty nurse, and a member of nursing service, the director or her assistant of each of the local hospitals. That Ms. Hammitt serve as the chairman, Dr. Charlie Blaylaw or Dr. Carter Davis be asked to represent the Medical Association, and that Ms. Edith Honeycutt be asked to represent the private duty nurses. Recommendation number one, no action. Recommendation number two, motion to adopt this recommendation, Ms. Mace, Mr. Christian Harris.
You still want your motion?
Yes, that was last May. That was actually last May. And I, um, uh, of course, in, in January, when we look after other registry business, we may, I di- uh, may ask these same people to serve. But, um, and certainly will be handled in the same way because that's already passed the vote.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I think this would be a great injustice to the Study Committee that in good faith our Advisory Committee de facto missed the task and this committee faithfully has attempted to discharge their duties and they have assembled, they have passed active business and they rejected plans. So you are in most inappropriate an act, acting committee.
Let me say this, Ms. Hammitt, um, this was not, certainly not in, um, uh, any way, uh, uh, a motion because it is trouble. It was just to take care of registry business all at one time. If we're taking care of parliament tonight, then we ought to take care of all of the registry.
And the Advisory Committee is attempting to bring recommendations. It's not formulating a policy procedure. And it's, uh, poor policy to call groups and say, "Would you do best?" and so then has to notify them all of all. In good faith, I can't do it.
It would be sort of...
I would...
No, I'm not, I'm not to ask them to do that. I should say, "Miss, please, 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 Hunter, January."
Well, you're tying the hands. Can the committee just sit back and say, "Can't proceed from here"?
No, because we still ask it.
Well, I don't understand your motion, ma'am.
Motion, motion to be reappointed and when they reappointed this Registry, when they appointed the Registry, when it was...
They, they...
You want me to read it? I move that we postpone the appointment of the Registry Committee until after the district meeting in January.
We can tell that. This is the one we're working on. I move to defer appointing the members to the Advisory Committee of the Registry. And they've already been appointed, January nineteen sixty-five, at which time the Registry Committee is appointed. Well, actually, on that Advisory Committee, you only make two appointments, say anyhow, your doctor and your nurse representative because the others are...
Automatic.
Automatic. The directors of nursing service. And they were all represented there, of all members using the Registry at the meeting on the twenty-third. A very constructive meeting.
Well, so again, I'll reiterate again. That all I was trying to do was to keep reg- registry, all registry business in one meeting and not having it divided in the minutes. The secretary is gonna have problems when she goes back looking up registry, uh, business. And if you keep it under one heading in one meeting, it's a lot better to have than having it divided here and then divided in, uh, January. Because you can vote down the motion.
Well, I don't think that was necessary myself. I agree with Ms. Hammitt. It would be embarrassing.
I was drawing my motion.
And this Advisory Committee has not, is not in the, uh, at the question that the Registry Committee does. It is entirely different. That is, it's set up at the present time and in the past. And I, I feel that they've been appointed and, and it should spend and should be voted on tonight, one way or the other.
Are you ready to vote on the motion?
I was drawing my motion for the approval of the second.
All right. Then we'll go on to the careers. Committee, um... I also wish to commit a name for our chairman, Cynthia Mallory. Been two names, um, suggested for a chairman. Um, do you wanna vote on this?
Take some paper and we'll vote on it.
Cynthia Mallory was our chairman, uh, this year. And the other name is, uh, Genevieve Jones. It's Cynthia Mallory.
You wanna have a...
Mallory, M.A.L.L.O.R.Y. She's our chair- was our chairman this year. Cynthia Mallory. Do you need any more paper down there? No, just the one you, you're voting for. Cynthia Mallory or Genevieve Jones. Just one name. No, just one. Ms. Mace, Cynthia. Does everybody have their slips in? We'll go ahead with the other members while this is being decided. Ex representing all occupational sections.
Is Ms. Evelyn Mercy eligible or is she on another community?
She hasn't been named to a committee to the line, which is public health. Evelyn Mercy, Public Health.
Anna Stanley.
Let's see, Evelyn Mercy, Stanley. Anna is...
I.N.E.T.Z.
Uh-huh. Stanley, uh-huh. And, uh, who did you suggest, Emily?
Agnes...
Bernice Dixon.
And Mildred Burns from NSA.
Mildred Burns, NSA. Bernice Dixon, um, uh, that's, um...
She's, uh, E.A.T.C.
E.A.T.C.
E ahead of it.
What about Stanley, what is she?
Administrator.
She was after Mildred Burns.
Agnes.
Administrator.
Uh-huh. She's a great... She's in our private duty.
Which town?
She's an administrator. Administrator. And Evelyn Mercy, Public Health. Administrator. And I suppose we're, the one that, um, is now elected chairman can go down to the seventh member of the committee. I.N.E.T.Z. Family.
The results for Ms. Mallory, ten. Genevieve Jones, seven.
Shall I be Genevieve Jones on the committee?
What's Ms. Mallory's?
Cynthia. And Cynthia Mallory, chairman. Thank you, Ms. Mace and Ms. Carly. I have to vote for one at a time. Did you, did you get all the committee, uh, uh, careers?
I don't have it, fine.
Cynthia Mallory, chairman. Evelyn Mercy, Public Health. Anna Stanley. Except she spells her name I.N.E.T.Z. Uh, Dental Section. Agnes Center, private duty. Bernice Dixon, E.A.T.C. Mildred Burns, NSA. And Genevieve Jones, um, E.A.C.T. And what else do we have?
Insurance, you need a good one.
We need a good chairman who likes to sell insurance.
Oh, my. Mister, what's his name?
Oh, she went to New York and then advised us she'd left until, uh, eleven months later when she wanted the transfer of a membership. We sent in, uh, we tried to contact her several times, unable to do so. And then when we sent in for a report, her annual report, she let us know she'd been gone to New York and said she notified us, but no letter was...
Mister Henderson.
Belzey, who you had before Rebecca. Well, we've been promising them a good active chairman.
Life is fine, because they wouldn't even pay her.
Uh, Mrs. Catherine Fitzpatrick is very widely interested in this. I don't know if she's...
Is she a member? Yes, she is and already... Catherine Fitzpatrick. Renewed for next year. She's gone to the ICN, incidentally.
Are we gonna put her down as chairman? Catherine Fitzpatrick.
First person name is used in the chairman.
She's called the name.
She would, if she would serve. Marie Jones.
And Ms. Mary Bowen, private duty.
Mary Bowen.
Yes, uh-huh.
And Alice Freeman.
Who? Alice Freeman. She's Public Health. Does that know, so? Thank you, too, dear.
Lableh Peta. Ms. Peta. Lableh Peta.
I tell you, why don't you save her for Ms. Duncan, uh, she's been living on...
Okay.
Well, what section is she in? I don't recall her name.
She said leave her off and put her on the other one.
Yeah, put her on the...
What, put her as chairman of the other one, is that?
I don't know about Ms. Chairman of it, but...
Oh, it's P.O.E. double T.E.R. That's the way you spell it. Uh-huh. She's, she is.
Yeah. I don't know about her being chairman of it, but she would be good on the...
We have four names. Any other suggestions?
Holly Collins from NSA.
Holly Collins. NSA. That's five, I probably...
Helen Wong, private duty.
Which one on, on insurance or on the other?
No, the study.
Ms. Graves was the first time. Let's see who you had last time. Lisa, no, that's Rachel. Helen Graves was chairman.
I would suggest that Helen Graves be the chairman.
Helen Graves, chairman. Do we have a...
Can she something else?
She's on membership, she's on by three committees. She's on, she's on the, uh, membership, membership and credentials.
Well, that Study Committee getting into it and getting all the material is difficult.
Why, Ruth Breach? Her school's being accredited this year. She can't do it.
You wanna know who was on last year? Ms. Graves, Chairman Mary Woody, Dorothy Knox, Lindora Robinson, Isabel Scrubs, and Lorene Overstreet. That's Mary Williams, National... Baypon. That's the study of the functions of AM. I think she was the first year. Public Health. She's Georgie Babes.
There should be, um, representatives there from each section.
We have Mary Woody, um...
We got Holly Collins.
Mary Woody from NSA. Is she on NSA?
Was Holly Collins on insurance on this?
She's on insurance.
That's what I thought. Well, who was Helen, Helen Wong?
Well, you nominated Ms. Peta for that.
I did nominate Ms. Peta on one up there.
She nominated Ms. Peta.
I nominated Ms. Peta on the Study Committee on the functions.
Do you want her to chairman? We don't have...
No, I don't think, uh, I'm not...
P.O.E.T.E.R.
P.O.E.T.T.E.R.
She might take the chairman, too, if I doubt it, so.
Could we remove Mary Woody's name from some other...
From where, Ms. Hannah?
She's not anywhere, unless, uh, utilizing her knowledge on this, maybe the function, because she has... You already have her on the...
Yeah, we took her off the sailor.
Is that Aunt Stevens?
I would suggest that Ms. Woody be the chairman.
Mary Woody, chairman.
Mary Woody, chairman of this...
Function. She's administrative. Isn't she? NSA.
Yes, yes, she's administrative. Yeah, her chairman.
What is Ms. Potter's first name?
Lableh.
Lableh.
It's Peta.
Peta. And Ann Stevens. Is Peta, uh, private duty?
No, she's, no.
E.A.C.T.
E.A.C.T. Ann Stevens, private.
And Helen Wong.
Oh, yeah, she named Helen Wong.
What was that last name?
W. Wong.
She's private duty, too.
She's in a board, then.
Boyton. Denise. B.O.Y.K.I.
B.O.Y.K.I.
Yes, she's E.A.T.C. This is very helpful in looking for the addresses on these, our eleven hundred people, so if you can tell us where they are and what they do, particular section, that's how they're set up. See, we don't have nothing public health.
B.O.Y.K.I. General duty. You don't have general duty either.
Is it? Oh, yes.
Who did you put on for public health?
She, we don't need to hear about it.
Elizabeth Scrubs was on before. Isabel Scrubs. She's Georgie Babes, Thursday. Shirley.
Lableh, Shirley.
Lableh, Shirley.
Instead of Isabel Scrubs.
S.H.U.R.L.I.N.G.
She's Public Health. What about general duty? We don't have a general duty. Our occupational health.
Who was chairman of that last year?
Ms. Graves.
Uh...
Helen Graves. But Mary Woody was on the committee.
Well, they never did have a committee meeting.
They had several committees, uh, meetings year before last, and I guess, I mean, last year. It was this year they haven't met either because of the, uh, convention, I think, they... Thought there'd be some other suggestions at the convention. I have six, is that right? Mm. Yes, I saw the committees. I was just wondering if we shouldn't go over the all of them and, and, uh, read them and be sure, or is there any question about any of them?
I think so.
Because there's been so much talk going on that, um, I would... Well, I'll ask the secretary to read the names of each committee and we'll check our list. I can't even read my own writing.
Program Chair, Chairman of the Program Committee, Ms. Frances Hammitt. Ms. Holland Crawford Law, Canon Emery, Bernice Dixon, grade number one. Jones, grade number two. Ms. Hudson, Georgie Babes, Ms. Parker, Saint Joseph, and Pete Mutt, Ms. Kimball. I took, I took Holland, okay.
Did you say Hollis?
Ms. Parker. No, I'm, I'm talking about Saint Joseph. That's Ms. Parker. We took the presidents of the alumni, you know.
Well, thank you.
Printing Chairman, Ms. Adkins, Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Wales. Ms. Charity Wales.
Is that all? Wouldn't have fourth one. Finance Chairman, Ms. Mace. Ms. Francis Oz, Ms. Linda Slaton Hopper, Ms. Margaret Withers. Legislation Chairman, Ms. Hudson, Stitchfield, Stipley, Private Duty, Ms. Dorris Taylor, Public Health, Ms. Martha Davis, General Duty. Oh, I'm getting down the wrong one, excuse me. No, wait a minute. Ms. Dorris Taylor, Public Health, and then Ms. Zertz, Private Duty. Ms. Elizabeth Langford, Occupational Health, Laugnate, Ms. McKenzie. And Ms. Rita Connelly, Nursing Service, and Ms. Diana McFarland. That was General Duty, I believe.
Diana Martha.
I got Diana.
Yes. Well, what is her name?
It's Deanna. Deanna, uh-huh. And is that F.A.R.L.A.N. D.I.A.N.A.
Well, I'm, I'm glad we got that.
Diana McFarland. Is that General Duty? He's all running together, right?
Well, that's why I wanna be sure when I send these notices out that I have it right.
McFarland, M.C., F.A.R.L.I.N., is that right? M.C.F.A.R.L.A.N.D., L.A.N.D. And Martha Thornton was on that, too.
Yeah, I had her name, too.
Uh, we don't have her. You mean you taking your name off and putting Diana McFarland on the stage?
She did.
Well, that's what the collection I need to make up. That's why I was asking. Is everybody ready for the next one? Membership and credentials. Chairman, Ms. Martha Davis, Ms. Lois Norde, Private Duty, Ms. Davis is General Duty. Azera Hill, Occupational Health. Ms. Helen Graves, Administration. Ms. Mary Stodgill, uh, General Duty.
E.A.C.T.
Oh, E.A.C.T. And Emma Lou Rain, E.A.C.T.
Public Health.
Oh, Public Health. Public health, is that?
Well, that's on there, there, well, but she.
Rachel Sanders.
Rachel, she was somewhere else. That's right. I like the races.
Well, I never did have on anything else, I got a blanket, basically.
The priestess.
Everybody ready for nominations, chairman, Ms. Nancy Mahafferty, private duty, Dorothy Wood, administration, Jean Carver, general duty, Reba Magorum, private duty, Daisy Morehead, public health, Lorene Holland, alternate, Ms. McKenzie, one of these, occupational health.
Charlotte Sack, E A T, E A C T.
Oh, yeah, I have Charlotte Sack, E A C T. I never knew names, anyway, I never did get them. Which ones do you, want me to go over them again? You want me to go over them again, Ms. Collins?
No, that's all.
You got them? Well, I give them to you. All right. Public relations, chairman, Ms. Adkins, Julia Johnson, general duty, Dorothy, I'm getting all one. Uh, Virginia Howard, administration, Sister Elizabeth Ann, E A C T, Pauline English, public health, Susan Slaton-Hoppen, private duty, Johnny Foregay, general duty.
We took Annie Stevens off.
It should on anything, yeah. Is she in?
Bailoas chairman, Dorothy Barfield, Martha, Nancy Sale, Jean Roach, Rachel Sanders, Jean Copeland, and Doris Henderson. Committee on Professional Practice, chairman, Ms. Margaret Ryan, Mary Hogland, E A C T, Ms. Margaret Whitcomb, nursing service, Ms. Mary Bennett, private duty, Bernile Verdel Bellamy, E A C T, Sister Lewis Mary, nursing service, Barbara Bethel, general duty, Maddie Lou Wade, public health, Ms. Esther Nugent, occupational health. And the registry committee we deferred. Shall I read the advisory committee? Careers, special committee, careers, Cynthia Mallory, the chairman, Evelyn Murphy, public health, Ms. Inez Stanley, nursing service, Ms. Agnes Center, private duty, Bernice Dixon, N A, E A C T, Mildred Burns, nursing service, and Genevieve Jones, E A C T. And insurance chairman, Ms. Catherine Fitzpatrick, Marie Jones, Ms. Mary Bowen, Ms. Marie Jones, what section is she coming?
Administration.
Ms. Mary Bowen, private duty, Ms. Alice Freeman, public health, Polly Collins, nursing service. Study committee on functions of A M A, Mary Woody, nursing service, chairman, Ms. Helen Wong, private duty, Ms. Mabel Potter, E A C T, Ms. Anne Stevens, private duty, Ms. Genevieve Barkin, E A C T, and Ms. Maple Shirley, public health. Denise.
Denise.
Yes, I have my favorite, that's where it's due, and that suck of reading is wonderful, and I have to check it.
Are there any questions? We have all of them. We have one other item of business, and this is to appoint a relief registrar. We read at our last meeting resignation of, uh, yeah, it's Ms. Brandon Bergam, and we need, uh, relief registrar, Ms. Brandon Bergam, registrar. What is your pleasure? Do we have any applications? I haven't seen one, if you're listening.
I have two, three names suggested, not that, that Ms. Rhim, uh, there's four different people mentioned, but she wants to go on night duty, and that isn't fair, because I had to talk and talk and talk, and we didn't have anyone to get, uh, our present night registrar, and I think it would be an insult, after she's there, she helps with the bookkeeping and things like that, to move somebody, to put somebody in that wouldn't even help us out. Now, I don't know how you feel about it, but I feel very strongly about that. Now, I had nothing against Mrs. Rhim, but I think we must take care of the people that helped us out when we were at a crisis, and I called, um, went to Ms. Hooker's home two, three times, talking her into coming to the restaurant, and then called Mrs., uh, Wong on the telephone, at least three times, before I finally got a, a yes from her, and then she only said she'd come just to help us out, and then after she came back, she said she would stay. But she helps with the bookkeeping, which eliminates the cost of a bookkeeper, but she would not be able, and she was taken off, and in fact, I don't think she would stay, but she helps with the bookkeeping, and, uh, she, and between she and Ms. Hooker, they had done all the bookkeeping since they had been back on the restaurant, I think would be, uh, very unwide, uh, to ask her to take the relief. But I asked, when I kept calling her, I asked her to come for nights, she was gone back on relief then, but, uh, I said, well, we didn't need that many nights, personally. And she, uh, is doing, uh, good work with the bookkeeping, and, uh, so that is.
What the? Do you have the application?
No, we don't have the, uh, present registrar, if it's necessary, until the nurses can, you know, uh, we can get some applications, and then, then if we get an application, we'll send out a, a vote for the board, a, a referendum vote, and, uh, I, that's all I know, but I think would be very wise, to upset what we have, when we're saving money, and doing a good piece of work, too.
Well, when you do get somebody, Ms. Mace, you, uh, we can send a referendum.
Someone asked, and said I could send the letter to the president, so. So, if the president gets a letter, she can, uh, have, and that can take care of it, but if anything comes to me, I will be glad to send it in to them, but does anyone have a suggestion of anybody? I have asked two, three people that have been private duty nurses in the past, if they would be interested, and, uh, and yes, one said she would go in and talk to Mrs. Hooker, you know, to, to see what it was, would be, the time, and, and like that. So, I don't, I, I'm not gonna give the names, because, uh, there's no doubt it won't materialize anywhere, but she would be a very fine person if she would, uh, consider, and when she first finished training, she did private duty.
Let's just hope they all stay well up there until we find somebody.
You have a provision that the private duty nurses recommended in the manual last year, that they be able to call someone in emergency, if, uh, it's agreeable with the board here, that they follow the manual and just use it until January, until they do reactivate your registry committee and, and, uh.
Well, I think it could hurt to the president of the private duty section, if she, uh, would be able to help us find someone.
Well, Hannah Ford, they've always posted it all the hospitals, that applications were, women would like that application.
And maybe we could move them, that would be them now, you know.
Even hospitals always posted it, so that they would know, that they were able to take applicants.
Chairman, I move that the hospital, if they requested the place of notice that there's, and would, that there, that they would receive applicants for, for, for the relief registrar.
Relief.
Or the relief registrar.
Is the second, Ms. Zirps, um, second. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary to no, motion is carried. We'll do that tomorrow, won't we, Sam?
Yes.
One more job, we're gonna pass. I move we are done.
Thank you, that's made.
This is a recording of the executive board meeting, Harold, November the thirtieth, nineteen sixty-four, seven thirty P M, Saint Joseph's Infirmary.
Seven thirty P M, Saint Joseph's Infirmary.
I think we have a quorum, and it's seven thirty, and maybe we can get started all the time, and it's, please, all the time. Hudson, would you open our meeting in private, please? We'd like to say in front of the U S Constitution and God, throughout this meeting, we thank thee for thy minibus and steward, and we ask for his presence in the meeting.
Come in, Ms. Collins. We have the roll called by our acting secretary.
Ms. Gladys Collins. Melissa Dixon. Ms. Hammond. Mrs. Alton. Ms. Mace. Mr. Kristen. Ms. Clark. Ms. Norrie. Ms. Wells. Ms. Mahafferty. Mrs. English. Mrs., um, is that Haley or Haley?
Holly.
Holly.
Spelt Haley.
And, uh, Sister Anne. And Mrs. Thornton. Mrs. Sanders. Ms. Zirps. Mrs. Alton, and we have, um.
Ms. Brown, Julia Brown.
Ms. Holland. Ms. Cannon, Emery. Mrs. Bernice Dixon, grade number one. Grade number two, Mrs. Jones. Ms. Hudson, George Babes. Mrs. Kimball, Piedmont. Mrs. Parker, Saint Joseph's. And Sister Elizabeth. And Sister Anne.
Fifteen of twenty-four are here, I think we have a quorum. As, um, a notice was sent to you, this is a special meeting of the executive board, this district, Georgia State Nurses Association. Uh, call to appoint standing and special committees, and to appoint a relief registrar. Please attend, pop. That you did, and I do appreciate you coming out on a night like this. You have been provided with a list of committees that are to be, um, appointed, and I think, I hope that all of you have all the names that we need at your fingertips. How will you, come in, please. Come on in.
Now, see, sister, I'm gonna lose my place.
Your room, Cole.
Have you got a tray down there?
Ms. Mahafferty.
Get going, no time.
Sister Elizabeth Ann and Ms. Mahafferty.
Our first, um, committee is the program committee. Our second vice president serves as chairman by virtue of her elected office. Do you have suggestions for, for the members?
President, I'd like to make a suggestion, that we ask the, um, presidents of the alumnus to serve on program duty, and several years ago, we, the alumnus, uh, planned the programs, and I believe we had better representation at district meetings, when they, each alumni had the, uh, was responsible for the program, and it did, um, I believe encourage, uh, members attending, and some of them would come for the program, when their alumni was having it, they wouldn't have come otherwise. I may have been, uh, less prepared for the alumni, they don't come to me.
Is there second? And third? Any discussion? Those in favor?
I had one volunteer that wants to serve on the program committee.
You do? Is she a alumni president?
Private duty nurse, I'm sure she isn't a alumni president.
Even when all their, your alumni could serve, it wouldn't have to be the president, he could be the alumni itself, and it could have several alumni sponsoring the program, uh, during the year. Uh, but they would be responsible for a program.
Well, uh, is there any other discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary to no. Then we have, um, for program, um, Ms. Holland from Crawford-Long. Uh, who she wants to ask, is that what she likes, or? She would be responsible, is that right?
Alumni would be responsible.
Mm-hmm. And Emery would be, Ms. Cannon. Um, Bernice Dixon, for grade number one. Ms. Jones, for grade number two. Ms. Hudson, for George Babes. Kimball from Piedmont. And Ms. Parker from Saint Joseph's. Takes care of both. Pyramid, you have this. For printing.
Ms. Adkins chairman.
Atkins chairman. And last year, we had Miss Wells working on it.
I don't remember working much. I guess I wasn't called.
Yeah, we called you, you said yes.
We had those statements fixed, you know, with the um, um. The seal, the district seal. That's the only different thing we have done this year.
The finance chairman is next and of course, the treasurer serves on this. She, Miss Mace.
Nominate Francis Olson.
Miss Linda. Lettenhoffer.
Uh, Miss Margaret Wicker.
How do you spell that name?
S H L A D E N H A U F F E N. But it's pronounced, I think, as Sladenhoffer.
Sladen, huh? Slade. Well, I believe that's three with the treasurer. Francis Olson, Margaret Wicker and Miss Sladenhoffer. Miss Mace is the treasurer. For legislation.
Nominate Miss Ditchfield as chairman.
Uh, I believe Miss Ditchfield doesn't want to serve as chairman this year, she says she wants to work with the committee but not as chairman.
I said, Miss Hudson as chairman. She has more work on her place than anyone we've ever had.
The second?
Second.
Miss Hudson, chairman. Yeah, she'll serve on that but she didn't want.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Zirps.
Sibley.
Miss Zirps, nominate Zirps to serve.
I believe the um. Suggestion here is five members representing various occupational groups. So, Miss Hudson is uh, uh, chairman. Miss Ditchfield, Miss Sibley, what occupational group is she? Private duty.
You have to have two groups, two sections because you have eight people, eight spaces.
Miss uh, Brown, would you suggest somebody from public health?
I'm sorry, but I don't believe I know enough of the people yet to make a suggestion on this.
What about your staff, you know anyone in your staff?
Let's put down Doris Taylor.
I vote for Doris. She's public health.
Mabel Hamrick.
Hamrick. H A M B.
A.
I think, uh, Mabel.
Well, they've got E A C T there, um.
What's Miss Ditchfield? Is she E A C T? Who else? Occupational health, for down here.
This is the place.
Rita Conlin.
Occupational health and, and Miss Dixon suggested Elizabeth Langford, she's occupational health.
General Duty.
Miss Hudson, are you General Duty?
I am E A C T.
E A C T. Uh-huh. Who's nursing service? Miss Rita Conlin. Conlin. C O N L I N. L O N. Is she a ma- is she a member?
I think she is.
Did you say Rita? Rita Conlin. And what is she?
She was damn.
She will be.
Occupational, that, Mabel Hamrick.
Think you did have to read these over after you finish them so we'll be sure we all have a thing.
Occupational.
Who is Mabel? Mabel Hamrick for two, for a second.
She's E A C T too.
We got three of those.
Yeah.
We supposed to have two of those, huh? Have you, you don't have a general duty?
No.
Don't have a general duty in there for now. Who is it?
She's doing this.
Martha Davis. What, Martha Davis? Martha Davis. What about Deanna McFarlane?
McFarlane. Is she a member?
General Duty.
General Duty.
In addition to your name or?
Yeah.
In addition to my, not, she's taking my buzz.
Oh. I have eight names. Hudson, Ditchfield, E A C T. Sibley, private duty, Taylor, public health. McFarlane, general duty, Hamrick, E A C T. Elizabeth Langford, occupational health and Rita Conlin, nursing service. That's eight. Is that all occupational groups?
We want to take out one E A C T. That's three.
Five members. I guess we'd better take Miss Hamrick off, hadn't we, Miss Wells?
That's three. That's it.
Mm-hmm.
Miss. That's today, yes. And so you've got a private duty.
Four, five, six, seven. We've got Sibley for private duty.
You have Zirps on that for private duty, don't you?
No. Sibley was, Miss Zirps suggesting, is Sibley, I believe, didn't you, Emery?
No, I did.
Somebody down there.
What else we got to have?
Well, the suggestion is five members representing various occupational groups. I believe we have five. One, two, three, four, five, we have six. Is Miss Conlin in uh?
You don't have to have.
E A C T. Isn't it, oh, well, that's um, we need six then, if they have a group.
You have six groups.
We have six groups, we can have six.
May I explain to you, uh, we've left there, I mean, the minimum, we've made room for that. In addition to the extra that you may make suggestions. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to have that many or that, um, smaller number unless it's indicated according to the bylaws over on this side. We have six.
Mm-hmm. We have six.
So, we're just gonna have seven instead of eight. Um, E A C T, is that Miss Ditchfield?
Uh-huh.
And Miss Hamrick?
And Miss Hudson.
And Miss Hamrick, what about Miss Hamrick? We took her off, that makes three. Put on in her place. We haven't put anybody.
Well, see, we already have two E A C T, Miss.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to um, suggest Miss Zirps on there, I know you have one private duty but. When it comes to any legislative matters, the ones that go over and sit in the capital and help and meet with committees of private duty nurses. I just hate to say that, but that's the way it's been. And we are, um, I had a, I have a letter that came in the mail. That, um, there, there likely to be some legislation introduced and we need somebody that can get over there and. And as much as they have at least fifty percent, or about fifty percent of membership of the district, if they had two representatives on, I think that would be, I mean. And I'd like to make a suggestion there. That's second.
Does anybody have any, one else they'd like to add to this committee? You think this is enough?
Well, we, we need all that we can get because, um, as if. Legislation is introduced, it means just go over there and stay, that's what it means, you have to have people covered. So.
But do you think this is enough from this district?
Yes, but that's.
Do you think this is enough from this district?
We can, we, and all these are good people, I think we can probably go in here. I'd like to suggest that in any event that Miss Langford can't take it, that Virgin McKenney, McKen. McKinsey. McKinsey, Virgin McKinsey is from occupational health, be her alternate. If Miss Langford can't do it. Now, um. She's a worker.
All right, our next committee is membership and credentials. And we want different occupational groups represented here. I think our past chairman has done a mighty fine job. Martha Davis.
She can take the third again.
This is Norwood.
Did you want her for chairman?
I started on that last year, was somebody else?
Miss Davis said she would accept it if they wanted her. Well, Miss Davis too, did.
She sure did. Mm-hmm. Martha Davis for chairman, and Miss Norwood, and Miss Norwood, who else? Um, Afira Hill, who's from occupational health. Hill. What is her first name?
A Z I R A.
A Z I R A.
A Z I R A.
Afira Hill.
I'm the name, uh, Rachel Fanderson, occupational health.
Rachel Fanderson.
Is Martha Davis chairman?
I'd like to suggest Miss Margaret Whitcomb.
If we don't have one for Emery, Miss Wells, let's have Miss Gray, maybe she could uh, uh, get her male, her girls that would join the district. I talked in a number of them, I remember.
Who?
Miss Gray. He's, he's got E A C T.
Is that Miss Pope? Crawford Long.
Gray, Helen Gray.
Gray.
Uh-huh.
Margaret.
Catherine Pope. Jackie P.
Well, she's in general duty. Well, general duty, um. Who's on Alford on that first committee? She was on Alford on that one. I like that one.
We need someone from E A C T on here. Mayor Stargell from E A.
Who are we gonna put her in?
Mayor Stargell.
We're gonna take one of these off.
We don't have anyone.
Miss Mace, who else from public health?
S T O D.
She's occupational health.
Let's put down Miss Raines.
Emma Raines.
We're gonna have that one.
She's public health.
Yes, we just put the minimum down there, then you add as many as you want to, to it.
See, there's six for occupational groups, if we have. Uh, Emily Raines. I have Martha Davis, chairman, general duty. Lois, it's Lois Norwood. Lois Norwood, private duty, of Zero Hill, occupational health. Rachel Sanders, occupational health. Helen Gray, administrative. Emily Raines, public health. And Mayor Stargell, E A C T.
Is that Emily or Emma on Raines? Emma.
Emma.
Mayor Stargell.
M A C.
Now, uh, nominating committee to serve with Mrs. Nancy Mahoney, chairman, seven members. These probably should be. Dr. Wood. It, what does Miss Wood, uh, it should.
Administrative.
Administrative.
And I, I suggest Frances Olson. Frances Olson.
She's administrative.
I, uh, nominate Rita McGorrel, private duty.
I nominate Charlotte Sax, E A C T.
We nominated Rita McGorrel. Daisy Moorehead, from public health.
Uh, Sax is, uh.
E A C T.
E A C T. Charlotte Sax. Who did you suggest? Daisy Moorehead, she's public health.
Nominate Mister Kristen.
No, I think they agreed that they tried to, uh.
For public health.
With eleven hundred members, I believe they agreed last year, you may not want, uh, perhaps this year, uh. Your policy be a little different, but last year, they tried to have them serve on just one committee. Rather than, rather than have too many.
Uh.
Margaret Whitcomb.
You have Dr. Wood for nursing service. Well, English, did all the. Take that up after. Finance. I thought, yeah, she said she'd take. We gotta have, what, public health.
Public health is Daisy Moorehead.
Private duty, that, uh, administration. That E A C T, occupational health.
Do you have a suggestion from, uh, occupational health?
About Ms. Collins. Lauren. How about Mrs. Kennedy, she's occupational health. We better, it's, uh, Alford is for St. Andrew. We better, no, you. Kind of occupational health. About Mrs. Kennedy, she, she doesn't check in. She's Alford up here.
I was the chairman of the occupational health last year.
Rachel Sanders.
Who?
Laura Raines. Collins.
We have her on one committee.
She would have her president if she accepts it unless she appoints somebody.
Up here in the problem, come in.
Problem. Oh, is she president of there now?
Uh-huh.
Crawford Long. But she doesn't have to be on that third, she's, I think, assigned to anybody else.
Yeah, that's.
Either Ms. McKenney, she does serve the alternate up here in legislation. Put her own as alternate, it's calling Ken. The two of them down here. Yeah. It is in Holland, one alternate, Ms. McKenney's an alternate up here.
In legislation. That's occupational health. Don't have my girl, boy. Okay, occupational health, administration, private duty. We don't have.
And we took off these all, we're putting back those.
We need somebody in general duty.
How many names do you have right now?
Um, we have Nancy Mahasty, chairman, Dorothy Wood, McGorham, Charlotte Sacks, Daisy Moorehead, Virgin McKenzie. Six.
Jean Carver.
Did you take off?
Jean Carver. She's here as Elizabeth James.
Jean Carver, is she general duty?
Yeah.
Mhm.
And we need another general duty?
No. Is that C A R V E R?
That's right.
And that's general duty. Our next committee is public relations, five members, including the secretary. Atkins chairman.
I have been chairman off and on for eighteen years, and last year reluctantly I took it, they said they would help me, and I had only one person present for the meeting, so I really think that you should have a new chairman. I finally ended up doing it all again.
Such a good public relations person.
Right, it's the committee.
So I think if you had a new chairman, maybe you'd have a little, little different approach.
You're the proper one, hey.
I'm already on one committee, I'm on pretty.
You know, one too.
No, that was Linda.
Linda Susan.
Oh, Linda's one up here, she's on.
Is Susan the one that went to condition?
No, Linda was that one.
Linda, Linda. I work on a committee.
Be nice, wouldn't it, if you had one from each occupational group?
Put Ann Stevens in private duty.
Ann Stevens.
Johnny Fourgate, general duty.
That's right. Who did you say? Julia Johnson, and what uh, what is she?
Well, this doesn't say it has to be.
Ms. Girl, Sister Liz Flanders, she would work on the committee.
Not the other. Not him.
You say Julia Johnson, yes, she's general duty.
General duty. What Sister Liz Flanders?
E A C T.
I'm in private duty.
Why couldn't she be chairman?
I just felt.
Why don't you be on the committee? Why don't you be chairman, I'll be glad to work with you. I like to talk to people. I'll take your picture and put it someplace, make a public relations.
Pauline English Public Health.
Say it in their mouth, you had to say yes, sir.
She's public health.
Helen Atkins, chairman, Ann Stevens, private duty, Julia Johnson, general duty, Sister Elizabethan, E A C T, and Pauline English Public Health. But she's up here on this side of town.
Susan, alright.
I suggested, and I suggested Johnny Fourgate too.
Is she getting married?
Well, you want our two committees?
She's not a, she's, she's not a member, I don't believe. She will, well, good, fine, that's what we wanted to do, we'll get some new ones on there. Well, good, I probably. She, Linda is, yes, she's. What is her name, this, the, the one you were talking about?
Johnny.
Johnny?
Fourgate, F O R G A Y, she's Jordan Baptist, does general duty, and she's tragic all along.
Well, where do you want her on the, what are they here? Take Ann Stevens off. We've got one general duty.
Uh, Ms. Zerbs, what is the other Sladen Hoffman, that Linda, she's the one for finance committee.
And Edith. And Susan Edith. What do you mean, that's number seven, I mean.
Yeah, what's the name?
What's the first name, Fourgate? Johnny. F O R G A T E?
G A Y.
G A Y, Fourgate.
And what is her occupational group?
She's general duty.
And who's saying ministeriate up here?
Yes, she is.
She's up here.
She's secretary to the advisory committee. She's secretary to the advisory committee on the second page.
Virginia Howard.
For. Bylaws. Yes, the chairman.
No.
Helen.
Oh, oh, my director of office. You want to read those again?
Well, um, for public relations, chairman, Ca- uh, Karen Atkins, Ann Stevens, private duty, Julia Johnson, general duty. Uh, Virginia Howard, uh, what, she's administrative, uh huh, Susan Sladen Hoffman, uh. Is she private duty? Uh, Sister Elizabethan, E A C T, Pauline English, public health, and Johnny Fourgate, general duty.
Take, take Ann off.
Take Ann off. Yeah, we'll have some refusal. Are we ready for bylaws committee? When does this uh, committee take?
Uh, who are the committee on nominations, would you roll that again?
Nancy Mahasty, chairman, Dorothy Wood, administrative, uh. Uh, I have uh, Ms. McGorham, what is her given name?
Rita.
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 Uh huh, Reba McGorham, private duty, Charlotte Sacks, E A C T, um, Jean Carver, general duty. Daisy Moorehead, public health, and Virgin McKenzie, uh, occupational health.
McKenzie is uh, alternate to Laura.
To her, uh huh. Frances Old is on another one, I see, I blew. Oh, finance committee.
Well, I talked to her and she said she would serve on the nominating committee, I know, that's why I suggested I'm in.
She's on finance. Are you ready for bylaws committee?
Twenty nine, how many members we had last year, that was not completed, uh, to serve.
I think that would be a good point.
My second admission.
It's been moved in seconds with the same committee, uh, Dorothy Barfield, chairman, Nancy Sale, uh, Jean Roach, Rachel Sanders, and Darius Hanson. And uh, Ray, uh.
And Jean Copeland filled in at the last.
Jean Copeland could replace Rachel Sanders if uh, Rachel's on another committee issue.
Rachel Sanders would be much better on the bylaws committee than on the membership, because somebody are interested in bylaws. And since she's in the doctor's office, she doesn't come in contact with membership.
Well, let's re- yeah, let's replace all the membership. Rachel Sanders, well, we have one other from occupational health, Azara Hill.
We got two.
Uh huh, so we take Rachel Sanders on the membership, and put her down in bylaw, Dorothy Barfield. Dorothy Barfield, Nancy Sale. Jean Roach. Rachel Sanders.
And Jean Copeland.
Um, Jean Copeland.
Copeland.
P E L A N D, and Darius Hanson.
Nancy Sale, Rachel Sanders, Darius Hanson, and Jean Copeland. This is the committee that's the standing committee now, instead of a committee on professional practice.
I'd like to nominate Mary Hogan from E A C T section.
Mary Hogan. I'd nominate Margaret Whitcomb from the NSA.
NSA.
She isn't a member now, but she will be next year, she's been in. What did you say her first name, Martha? Um, Margaret Whitcomb.
Margaret.
No, we took her off.
On finance, membership.
Margaret Whitcomb. Margaret Whitcomb's on finance.
Helen Gray.
Margaret Whitcomb.
And then Margaret Whitcomb's finance, okay.
Mayor Bennett, uh, the.
Who, Mayor Bennett. And Mayor Hogan too.
Sister Lewis.
Margaret Ryan's family.
Where is Mayor Bennett from? Saint Julie.
All white, all white, yeah.
Bellamy?
Who? B E L L A. First name? Virdel, V I R D E R D E L A N D. B E R D E L L A N D. Bellamy, B E L L A L A F Y.
I nominate Sister Louis Mary.
Is that Louis?
Louis, L O U I S.
L O U I S, Mary.
Clinic care.
Barbara Vessel, general duty, she's a member.
What's her last name?
Vessel.
Miss Wade served on this committee.
Uh huh.
I would like to suggest her.
Madely Wade, public health. And they teach T I E.
Janet Jones.
Maddie D, L W E. Let's see if we have all occupational groups, we have uh, Margaret Ryan is, what is she now?
She hadn't changed to a section, she was administrative.
Administrative.
But she has, she has not changed it.
Mayor Hogan, E A C T, Margaret Whitcomb, NSA, Mayor Bennett, private duty, Virdel Bellamy, I imagine she's E A C T. Sister Louis, Mary, uh, would she be general duty?
She's just back, I don't, I don't know what she'd be back, she just came back this year, you see.
In the clinic.
She's in, she's at the clinic.
Administrator, and Barbara Vessel, general duty, Madely Wade, public health. Who do who don't we have?
Occupational health.
Occupational health.
How about taking Janet Jones's name off the professional practice, and start counting down to something else.
Well, she mentioned it.
Did you want Ms. Jones on this committee?
No, I want her off that, I want her chairman of careers. One more. Need occupational health. Um, who's chairman of uh, uh, this man, she's the chairman of our convention committee, one, she's an occupational.
Nick Pat was a good one on that.
Yeah. Yes, she's still.
I know. Nugent, Esten Nugent. Esten Nugent.
S S I, N E U, and E U G E N T, I believe it.
Now, I think that's all, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Margaret Ryan, Mayor Margaret, um, Mary Hogan, and Margaret Whitcomb, Mary Bennett, Virdel Bellamy, Sister Louis Mary, Barbara Vessel, Madely Wade, and Esten Nugent. I guess we can't do anything about the registry committee now.
There's no reason why you need me.
You go by your own bylaws till the other bird doctor comes to you. I didn't bring the all, but I got them part of.
You're gonna have to have action by the board to reactivate that. It, it was dissolved until.
The uh, registry committee, important study committee now, when we get.
Yes, but she said you, at one of the meetings just recently, you said you're gonna reappoint her to take over January the first.
That's just bylaws. That's been bylaws with that.
I don't, that hasn't been asked about.
Well, you bylaws don't have to be acted on, you can go ahead and, and appoint, you come in, have ready to act. I mean, I'll tell you how you gonna do otherwise, except delay him another month or two.
Well, we.
Well, it reduces it from about eleven to nine, doesn't it?
It don't say it has to, does it?
No, it just says only at least nine.
At least.
Yes. There's no reason why. You made your report, hey? Well, then you need to have chairman of the committee, and you need to, to have the committee function. If, if this committee is no longer functioning.
It, it has been dissolved with the intent that it would be reactivated after the bylaws had been passed.
Did you say that?
Does the committee be reactivated?
No, no, that, uh, that a committee. Your action is, as of this date, that it is dissolved until the executive board deemed it advisable to reactivate.
Well, we, uh, we made a motion to reactivate the committee.
Let me tell. I rise for part of. I rise for part of the information. Members of the association do not vote on the action of the registry committee, that is the responsibility of this board. Therefore, the bylaws passed does not affect the rules of the registry. Because the, uh, administrative functions of the registry is the responsibility of this board. So it would, uh, the, uh, the action of the, uh, association is not needed for the, um, approval of any rules of the registry.
That's right, it's not a, it's not a bylaw, those are rules.
And you're not going by rules right now, what you're doing is according to bylaws and setting up your committees. And actually, they had planned to wait and do all of it following your change of bylaws, since it would make some drastic changes on that. But because there was some comm- much commotion at the last meeting, we took the tape recorder down to Ms. Watt. In Columbus. We do have a ruling on that, and it will be brought up at the next meeting on that. She listened to the tapes, and she gave her opinions on that. And her understanding was that, um. You're not gonna changing a rule right now. What you're wa- doing is according to a bylaw.
Whatever affects the registry has to be a reason. Has to be a reason. Because the, um, the, um, responsibility is invested in this board by the administrative functions of the registry.
That's right.
And the members of the association do not pass on the rules of the registry, it is the responsibility.
That's, you're completely right on that.
Now, um, whatever the rules say, it's in the power of this board right now to appoint the registry committee. Because, uh, the rules being passed that the board and the, um, uh, fifth district would not include those.
All right, now let me ask you, I'm, I'm doing for clarification personally, I'd be delighted all of them get appointed, let me get the cards out and set it up. And have it ready to go the first of the year. But now let me tell me, ask you this. If you appoint a committee tonight, and you pass your bylaws on January the, uh, seventeenth. Which would alter that? Then what do you want, want to do about it at that time? Well, at your present time, at the present time, you would get them from all of the alumni. Then if you came along in January and deleted the alumni representatives, and you have all adopted the recommendations from the regi- the study committee. As approved by the board, which has been done, uh, to be presented to the organization. Then you would definitely alter the previous bylaws.
But don't we go by these bylaws until those are?
Well, you have had action previously that the registry committee be dissolved. Until the, um, study committee had completed their study, and until the executive board deemed wise to reactivate it.
Well, you're.
And the, the plans to reactivate it from the study committee were with their proposed change in bylaws, which you have had and have approved.
Now, the board appointed this special committee, the special committee has acted. They have reported to the board, so a special committee when they make a report is dissolved.
And the board accepted that report.
Unless it be appointed, and the board accepted that.
And that changed the bylaw. That report made, made, uh, recommendations that the bylaws be changed.
You remember about the recommendations, I mean, what, how does it affect it, 'cause I didn't really.
Well, it does affect it very drastically, it affects it in, in so far.
Oh, that's a question. Therefore, anything pertaining to private duty has always gone back to the private duty section for approval, and it has never gone to the private duty section.
Well, that's why it was deferred, you would have had it all done in November, if, if the question didn't come up at the last meeting. All of this is being deferred because you asked for more time, and it would not have been done in January. Or had they not considered your wishes. And deferred it for that reason.
I make a move that we defer act- appointing a registry committee until, uh, after our January meeting.
It's been moved and seconded that these, uh, registry committee be delayed to last of the January, uh, district meeting. Ms. Wales and Sister Christian second. It's a discussion.
Yeah. May I, may I just bring this up? Uh, what if in the January meeting, and I hope it happens, uh, however it were to move. Or what if they don't, uh, pass on these bylaws, and we have to go back to the bylaws, makes them have to be.
I don't think there's any real good reason why they can't be voted on this time, there was a technicality last time, which was a good reason for postponing it. This time, I really can't think of any good reason why it should be, the voting should be deferred, and then however the voting turns. Will decide what the composition of the registry committee, uh, you know, would be.
Could that study, um, committee function until, or could, should I make that as an amendment to the motion and add it?
They, they were charged with the responsibility of, of, of management of the registry until such time that they deemed it wise.
Well, could I amend the motion to state that it would, we would, um, hold the, what was your? Say your amendment, I'll add to it. Say your motion, I'll add.
That we defer post, uh, appointing a registry committee until after the district meeting in January.
And I add, and that we continue with the same study committee until we have the venue.
Is that your, uh, wish to add that to your committee?
I agree.
And Sister Second, this, uh. Is there further discussion?
Well, I want to add, what is the study committee?
The study committee is a group of, uh, who was asked to study the unrest in the registry. And the board voted to dissolve the present, the registry committee that was active at that time. And the study committee, uh, operates the registry until another committee was named.
Well, do we have to wait until the bylaws are passed, or do you set up a committee the way the new bylaws say, or can we set up?
This is the motion that Ms. Wales has made, that we wait until the bylaws are acted on. To set up this registry committee.
I suppose it doesn't have.
Uh, included in this is that the study committee function until.
Another, suppose in January that the bylaws don't pass, then how do we make a?
You want to write your motion and let her.
I'm asking things, I'm asking. What we do if bylaws don't pass? We still don't have a registry committee.
Uh, uh, can't, as I say, I can't think of any real good reason why they shouldn't be voted on, either yea or nay.
They be voted on, but suppose they don't pass and then bylaws, then what kind of committee would we have?
Then we'll go ahead and point.
Same control as what you used to have.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Talking way on my head, I was like.
Well, what's the difference in the registry committee if we dissolve, I mean, the proposition of?
The composition at the present time, you have, uh, representatives from the alumni, and see, they served three years, you don't do it just one year. So you won't set it up and have it right. And then they have two from the individual group and one administrator alternating. Well, they've taken care of that in the, uh, recommendation to have the advisory committee of all administrators using the registry. And that they have, uh, at least nine members, it, um, it designates that they follow the minimum standards. And that was clarified by Ms. Watt, Ms. Zirps, in regards to the minimum standards set up by the state. Had nothing to do with salary, but it was the, that's right, well, it was clarified, and it had nothing to do with salary at all, but they.
You want me just to add?
Yeah.
Just do that, and.
Oh, she is.
Well, I thought.
Well, I mean, she, no, she's the, uh, treasure, she has to be, uh. She's on it, but would she be chairman?
Oh, that's what I thought.
You meant Ms. Watt said she would take it from the minimum, I mean, from the, um, Georgia State National Association Registry Committee?
That's right, that's it, exactly. It was in the original motion, but for clarification, uh, because Ms. Watt asked that we do not refer to her name again. But the committee of the state bylaw, uh, broke it down into sections, uh, and clearly defined what they meant in the minimum standard. Wait, you want to read the motion, so we'll have it probably.
We postpone the amendment of the registry committee. I move that we postpone the amendment of the registry.
Appoint.
Appointment of the registry committee until after the district meeting in January, and that the registry study committee function until that time. Chair of the world.
And, uh, first question. Sister Christian second. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no?
No.
I believe three opposing. Four.
I was one of them.
I know, you and Ms. Nolan, Zirps and Mahaffey, five against. Five against. I believe it's ca- the motion has been carried.
And if they don't say in the line, they should come to the private duty section.
Yes, it's carried.
For the registry, let them study them, and look on the board and say so.
You have plenty of time now. All right, let's move down then to the advisory committee to the registry, and I believe this is, uh, um, automatic, composed of all directors of nursing service. Using the registry, private duty nurse, and one, uh, physician. This is a physician setting it up.
I move that this be deferred until January forty eighth.
The board reactivated this, um, it was brought before, that was one thing that I thought they had action on, but it was referred to us that we already had an advisory committee. And, uh, in the rules. So it was reactivated, and they had a meeting on the twenty-third. You have that already, you have a, an advisory committee, as well as, uh, a doctor's advisory committee. That's it, so it was just reactivating.
And we don't want a new one, then?
No, uh-uh.
They're, uh, they're.
They just, it's just been reactivated. And they, they have had that two meetings. They've had two meetings within the past two months, and the last one being on the twenty-third with all hospitals represented by Georgia Baptist and Piedmont. Wait, you invited?
Yeah, we're invited.
Are we ready for the careers committee?